Thank you. It is with great sadness that I have to announce the recent death of ex-councillor and Mayor Garth Houchen. As a long-serving councillor for the Longbuck Ward, serving both Langbar and Redcar and Cleveland councils, he was a great champion for the area of Mask and New Mask and enjoyed representing his local community. As Mayor of Redcar and Cleveland in 1998 to 99, he was a great ambassador for the borough, getting out and about to meet the local community and loved representing the area, including visiting Trossdorf, Germany for twinning celebrations. He raised £3,000 for the Imperial Cancer Research Fund in his civic year. Our thoughts and prayers are with his wife Carol and all his family at this extremely difficult time. Please would members join me in a minute's silence? Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the AGM of Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council. To deal quickly with the technical issue before the business of the meeting is started, you will be aware that under the terms of the constitution, there is normally a requirement for members to stand when speaking and that voting is usually by way of a show of hands. Obviously, these rules are impractical in a remote meeting. So can I propose that council procedure rules 21.1 and 17.3 are disapplied for this meeting so that standing is not required and voting will take place by way of a roll call if necessary? Could I have somebody to second the proposal, please? Thank you, councillor Chris Gallagher. Are we all agreed? Anybody disagree? Thank you. So turning to the agenda, item one, apologies for absence. I have received apologies from councillor Fisher, councillor Graham Jeffrey, councillor Craig Holmes and councillor Tim Gray. Are there any further apologies, please?
Madam Mayor, we've had an apology from councillor Lynne Pallister. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, thank you. On to item two of the agenda then, election of mayor. So this is to elect the mayor of the borough of Redcar in Cleveland for the municipal year 2021 to 22. Are there any nominations for the election of mayor, please?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate councillor Carol Morgan yourself as mayor for the following year.
Thank you very much. Is there a seconder?
I would like to second that, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further proposals? Okay, can I take it then that there are no further proposals? Councillor Nightingale, you'd like to speak?
Yes, I'm a little bit surprised. I thought there would be another nomination. I think I withdraw my... Unless you'd like to have let me do provide you with the eulogy. I'm absolutely delighted to support
Not dead yet.
councillor Carol King, Carol Morgan as the mayor continuing into the coming year. And I think it's particularly appropriate, given the unfortunate situation we've experienced over the past year or so. Already, in the difficult circumstances, councillor Morgan has actually shown to be an excellent representative of the borough. And she's been able to continue with the whole series of engagements, even in the real world as well as in the world of teams. Above all, she has still been able to help individuals, taken part in local community events and worked for local charities, especially for people affected by the pandemic. On the last Saturday morning, her collaboration with Martin Nuthorp Knitters raised around £600 for local charities. And I'm quite sure that my great-grandson will be delighted with the koala and the aardvark that we were able to get. I'm absolutely sure that many people will think it's great that the borough will have a mayor who continues to have so many great attributes. A dog lover, a borough fanatic, a former Nuthorp schoolteacher who speaks both French and German and understands my version of French. So bon appre medie, Madam Mayor. She is also someone who is a runner at 5K and half marathon, a cyclist, a litter picker, a friend of Nuthorp Station, and I must be very careful how I say this because she has become a yarn bomber, not a yarm bomber. This means knitted displays at the station. She's a helper for Teeside Hospice, a grandmother capable of combining not only the role of childminder but also chauffeur. All this in addition to being able to have the time to be a wonderful councillor representing the people of Ormsby and Nuthorp. So I'm convinced the council will be absolutely right in electing Carol Morgan to be a brilliant choice of our mayor and first citizen of the borough. And I do wish her considerable success in the coming year.
Well, thank you councillor Lynne Nightingale for those very kind words.
Anytime you like.
Thank you. So can we just double check that there are no further nominations for mayor for this coming year? And is everybody in agreement? Nobody's shouting up their disagreement. So in that case, I will declare that the mayor for 2021 to 22 will be myself. Councillor Carol Morgan for Ormsby Ward. A strange circumstances. I hope this never happens again. So yeah, just as a very final quick word from me, thank you very much for showing confidence and allowing me to continue as mayor. Hopefully, I'll be able to get out to meet lots more people. Obviously, hoping that all the restrictions continue to relax. We hope so. Okay, lovely. Thank you. So that's that item done. The next item, of course, is the election of deputy mayor. So can we please have nominations for deputy mayor?
Madam Mayor, can I nominate councillor Stuart Smith, please, for deputy mayor?
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Is there a seconder for that nomination, please?
Can I second that nomination, please, Madam Mayor?
Thank you councillor King. Are there any further nominations for deputy mayor? Okay. So therefore, I hereby duly elect councillor Stuart Smith as deputy mayor to continue in his excellent role supporting me as he has done since September.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So moving on to item four. Somebody can only see my initials. I am on picture, I think. Maybe it's you, Karen. Item four of the agenda, to approve the minutes of the annual general meeting which was held on the 24th of September 2020. Could somebody please propose those minutes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, happy to do that, councillor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Can somebody second that?
Councillor Brooke.
Councillor Brooke, thank you, seconding that. Are we all agreed with the minutes of the AGM of the 24th of September 2020? Anybody disagree with the accuracy? Okay, therefore those minutes are approved. Item five on the agenda are announcements. First of all, I would like to just make a short announcement. I would again like to thank everybody who has supported me in raising funds for Zoe's Place Baby Hospice and Eva Women's Aid. In very limited circumstances, the total raised since September is round about £3,000. And that, of course, will be shared equally between those two very worthwhile charities. I just want to give a special thanks also to Nuthorp and Martin Knitters, whose needles really have been red hot, creating lots of lovely items for their Christmas and spring stalls and other fundraisers for my chosen charities. For the forthcoming year, I have chosen two charities with a particular focus on our children and young people. The Link CIC, based in Redcar, provides therapeutic and support services to children, young people and their families across the South Tees area who are experiencing emotional distress and mental health problems. And Ruby's, based in South Bank, supports girls aged 10 to 18, again across the South Tees area, working closely with schools and other agencies to increase self-esteem, build resilience and stay safe. The charity also hopes this year to develop a support service for boys to help combat the toxic masculinity culture that can prevent boys and young men asking for help until it may be too late. So my two chosen charities, The Link and Ruby's. I hope I may count on your support for these important causes. I will then ask for the managing director, head of paid service, if he has any announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No announcements on this occasion.
Thank you. Item six on the agenda, announcements from the leader of the council. Councillor Lanigan, do you have an announcement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very special announcement today. I would like to thank councillor Barry Hunt for his time as cabinet member and to announce today that Julie Craig will be taking on that cabinet post from today. And I'm sure that we all wish her well going forward with this. And so thank you councillor Hunt and welcome councillor Craig. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Item seven is the review of proportionality and distribution of seats. Everybody has received a report for this. Could somebody propose this review, please?
Proposed that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Is that proposal seconded?
Seconded, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor.
Right, okay. I'll take that one from councillor Watts. Thank you. Seconded by councillor Watts. Okay. Right. Is, okay. So that, is that agreed by everybody? Does anybody disagree? Okay, thank you. There don't appear to be any disagreements. So therefore, we will accept that report from the governance director and monitoring officer on the review of proportionality and distribution of seats. On to item eight of the agenda is to approve scrutiny committees and such other committees and working parties and their chairs and vice-chairs as the council considers appropriate. So so far as the committees are concerned, where positions are uncontested, can we ask the leader to move them on block? I understand there is a small change in the resources committee in that councillor Gallagher will be replacing councillor Wells.
Yes, Madam Mayor, that is correct. So that's the only one that needs to be changed. Can we move on block everything that we've got in front of you unless I think we've got G scrutiny for chair, Madam Mayor, that needs to be addressed today. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can just take the committees first. So thank you councillor Lanigan. We have a proposal for the committees. Do we have a seconder, please?
I'll second then, Madam Mayor.
Is that councillor King?
Councillor King.
Thank you. And are we all agreed to move the committees on block? Does anybody disagree? Okay, thank you. Don't appear to be any disagreements. Okay, so the committees are uncontested. Moving on to the chairs and vice-chairs, we have a proposal again from councillor Lanigan that we move the chairs and vice-chairs on block apart from, we have a contest for the Chair of G. Do we have a seconder for this, please?
I'll second that, please, Madam Mayor. Councillor King.
Thank you councillor King. Are we all agreed to take the chairs and vice-chairs on block apart from the Chair of G? Is there anybody that disagrees? Okay. Okay, then that is accepted then. Moving on then, as part of this, to the Chair of G. Do we have a proposal for the Chair of G?
Yes, Madam Chair, it's councillor Thompson. I would like to propose councillor Cliff Fogg to continue as Chair of G Resources Scrutiny.
And I would like to second that councillor, Madam Mayor.
Is that councillor Ryder? Yes, it is. Thank you. So councillor Thompson and councillor Ryder. Thank you. Are there any further nominations?
Yes, it's councillor Cutler here. Can I propose councillor Barry Hunt, please?
Thank you councillor Cutler. Do we have a seconder for that proposal?
Yes, councillor Fletcher would like to second that.
Okay. Okay. Are there any further nominations for Chair of Growth Enterprise and Environment Scrutiny? Okay, so then we now then need to go to a vote. So just to refresh, nominations for the Chair are proposed by councillor Thompson and seconded by councillor Ryder. And for Barry Hunt, the proposer is councillor Cutler and the seconder is councillor Fletcher. I will hand over to councillor, Mr John Sampson to conduct the vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will call out your names in order. So I'm looking for the answer. Councillor Fogg, councillor Hunt or abstain? I will return to people if I've called their name and I haven't heard a legible vote at the end of the list. So if I can start first with councillor A.
Abstain.
Councillor Baldwin.
Abstain.
Councillor Barnes.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Berry.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Brady.
Abstain.
Councillor Brooke.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Brown.
Abstain.
Councillor Corley.
Abstain.
Councillor Clark R.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Clark B.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Cook.
Abstain.
Councillor Craig.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Cutler.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Davies.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Dowson.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Hunt. Councillor Fogg.
Councillor Fogg.
Councillor Foley-McCormac.
Abstain.
Councillor Gallagher.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Griffiths. Yeah, I've just got that councillor Griffiths, thank you. Councillor Hanaway.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Head.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Holmes L.
I'm going to abstain.
Councillor Holyoke.
Abstain.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Jeffrey S.
Abstain.
Councillor Jones. Councillor Jones. I will return. Councillor K.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor King.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Lanigan.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Laxkeeler. Councillor Laxkeeler. I will return. Councillor Lockwood.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Massey.
Abstain.
Councillor Moody.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Morgan. Councillor Nightingale G.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Nightingale I.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Obens.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Quartermaine C.
Abstain.
Councillor Quartermaine L.
Abstain.
Councillor Rees.
Abstain.
Councillor Ryder.
Councillor Fogg.
Councillor Smith Sandra.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Smith Stuart.
Abstain.
Councillor Smith V.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Thompson.
Councillor Fogg.
Councillor Watts.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Wells.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Wesprie.
Councillor Hunt.
Councillor Williams.
Abstain.
Councillor Wilson.
Councillor.
Sorry, I missed that.
Councillor Hunt.
Thank you. And I just had two to return to and I'm not sure if they're in the meeting, but I'll try again. Councillor Jones. And councillor Laxkeeler. Yeah, they hadn't confirmed they're not in the meeting. I'll just do the addition, but I think from the nominations I have received, it's councillor Hunt, but I'll get the proper numbers for you, Madam Mayor. So Madam Mayor, it's four votes for councillor Fogg, 28 votes for councillor Hunt and 17 abstentions. Yes.
Okay, thank you. So just to repeat, the results were four votes for councillor Fogg, 28 votes for councillor Hunt and 17 abstentions. So councillor Hunt is elected to the Chair of G. The next item on the agenda is to appoint elected members to represent Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council on outside bodies. The outside body list has been circulated to all members.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. We do need Vice Chair for G.
I believe the Vice Chair is not contested.
All right. Sorry, Madam Mayor. I wasn't aware. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
On a point of order, Madam Mayor.
No problem.
A point of order, please.
Councillor K.
Just because something's on the list doesn't mean it's sacrosanct and members are at liberty to propose other people if they so wish. And just perhaps nobody wants to propose anybody, but
Yes, councillor.
because it's on a piece of paper.
Yeah, I also understand it was already moved on block and everybody agreed to that.
I thought that was just the committee members. I think you should
We then moved on to the Chair and Vice Chairs. We did the same for the Chair and Vice Chairs.
I do apologise, Madam Mayor. Yes, it was moved on block and that was my mistake. It was for the Chair only of G. I do apologise. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you satisfied with that, councillor K?
Have to be, unfortunately.
Well, as I understand it, members agreed to move the Chair and Vice Chairs on block apart from the Chair of G, which was then proposed and seconded and voted on.
I accept that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So the outside body list, as it stands, there are no contested positions for outside bodies. So again, could we have a proposal to move that on block, please?
I propose that, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. And do we have a seconder?
I'll second that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor King. Okay, is everybody agreed to move the outside bodies list on block? Does anybody disagree? Okay, thank you. It appears to be moved. Thank you. Item 10 on the agenda, I would like to ask the leader to move the scheme of delegation set out in the constitution.
Madam, can I so move that, please? I know members have got the full list.
Thank you. Is that seconded?
I'll second that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor King. Do any members disagree? Okay, no disagreements, so I think we can approve the scheme of delegation. Thank you. And then finally on to item 11 is to approve the programme of ordinary meetings of the council for the year. You have them listed there, the next one being the 1st of July. Could I ask councillor Lanigan to move approval of the programme of ordinary council meetings for the coming year, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, can we approve, please? You have the list in front of you, I'm sure that you are aware that the next council meeting going forward will be July and hopefully that we will be all together in some place or other by then and not going to remote meetings. Thank you, Madam Mayor, can we just approve?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, was that councillor Quartermaine? Thank you. So that's moved and seconded, are we all in agreement? Is there anybody that disagrees? Okay, thank you, that is then approved. And that concludes the meeting for this year's AGM. Thank you all for your attendance and have a good week.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.